All right, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. The following meeting will be video recorded and broadcast over local access channel eight and through the town website at www.eastham-ma.gov. So we'll start with public and select board information. Does the board have any, anything to share? Bob?
Not today.
Not today, all right. So, anyone from the public have anything that's not on the agenda? Joanna? Oh, go ahead.
Thank you for having me. I just wanted to do an update for the Windmill Weekend, which is coming up the weekend after Labor Day, the sixth, seventh, and eighth. Just gonna run quickly through the agenda. We have a talent show at the Elks Club Friday night at 7:30, where we will recognize our honorees Dave and Gloria Schropfer. On Saturday morning at 8:30 at First Encounter, we have the sand art contest, which the rec department is sponsoring. That starts at 8:30. Register it if you want to enter. Show up at 8:30 to register and we encourage family teams to get together. In the past, it was really fun to see the families working together. On the Green on Saturday, we have events all day, Saturday and Sunday. We have 21 vendors on Saturday with 23 nonprofits. Our music includes Rock Harbor Three, Sarah Burrell Band, Monica Rizzio, Sarah Swain. On Sunday, we have Trevor the Juggler, Bagpipes, Natalia Bonfini, and Dirty Water Band. And new this year on Saturday or Sunday.
Sunday.
Sunday, thank you. Sunday, we have Salty Boots Line Dancing. So that's gonna be really fun. And both days we'll have food and wine and beer garden as we did in the past. Sunday, we'll have free face painting for the kids. Saturday, we have a shuttle that will be going. We have one bus going from First Encounter Beach to the Green all day long, just going back and forth. And then a second shuttle, thanks to the town for their generosity, to be using one of the COA shuttles between the Elks and the Green from 10 to 2. So that kind of covers our vehicle show. Again, both days on the Green, we have family and kids games and free kids raffle. We have bikes to raffle off for the kids. Saturday at 10 to 2, we have the vehicle show at the Elks. We're anticipating around 80 vehicles with judging at around 1:30. Also on Saturday at the Field of Dreams, the Police Department is sponsoring the Touch a Truck from 11 to 1. And then turning on to Sunday morning early, we have the 5K Road Race that starts at 8:00 AM at First Encounter. Pre-registration is, so there won't be any registration that morning. It was too chaotic last year. So, pre-registration is online and I'll share the, our website in a minute. Online registration, or you can come to the Green on Saturday from 2 to 4 to pick up your bib or to register. And this year, we're partnering with the parents group from the elementary school. So they're volunteering to help some of the parents. And then half of our proceeds are gonna, are gonna be donated to the parents group this year. On Sunday, our parade starts on Route 6 at 10 o'clock. So far, we have 26 entries. And the official closing for entries is the 29th. So you can register online at our website, which is easthamwindmillweekend.org. Again, families in the past have, you know, gotten together and done their own floats and those are the funnest, I think. We have four musical entries at the parade, on the parade, and along with a stilt walker and a wing dancer, but Bev doesn't know what the wing dancer does yet. So we'll have to find out about that. And then just lastly, we're just grateful for the town and our businesses for all of their and your support. We are holding a raffle as we've done in the past. In the past, it's been just through the mail, but we're not able to hold a raffle through the mail now. So it is online at our website, or you can come to the Green to our booth and we can register you there for the raffle. Again, we're a nonprofit and our proceeds go back into the event and also to our scholarships. We have three scholarships that we award every year. Our raffle has over 80 prizes. And you may have seen the postcard, which I forgot to bring, but everyone was mailed a postcard, so that has information about our raffle on it as well. And I think, oh, we will be at Ace Hardware and the Northeast Ham Post Office in the Fairway in person to sell raffle tickets as well. So hopefully, hopefully we'll have great weather. And for more information, again, go to our website, easthamwindmillweekend.org, and hope to see you there. Thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Okay, bye. Sorry about the card. I was supposed to remind her to bring the postcard. Drop the ball. You had a comment?
Paul Burns, 70th Hill Road. I'm here to discuss the Rock Harbor project of our docks and what's ongoing on down there. It's been seven years. Seven years at the acceptance I was there. I was there with the town administrator, the head select person, the designer, the engineer, and the contractor. Upon being on the southern docks, standing on the platform, it was deemed it wasn't safe. I was told by the town administrator she would have three separate designs to redo the ramp that goes down. The ramp that's there now, the town and the selectmen made the problem. They used the old ramp from the northern docks to save money. So what a ramp is, is a hypotenuse of a right triangle. So when you have an elevation of low tide and you have an elevation of the platform, the hypotenuse is your ramp. That ramp at low tide is at 31 degrees. It's incapable of walking up and down it. You can't do it. That was discussed. So as we go on, seven years, we released the contractor, we released the design engineer. Nothing got done. Now, now we're talking about doing more work down there. I was given a two-year timeframe that there would be a new ramp system put in by the season for 2025. Now I'm being told that isn't gonna happen. At this point in time, I have notified the Handicap Access Board. The town didn't, the engineers didn't do it, I did it. Because we don't have boats of 40 feet long, we don't have to adhere to ADA compliance. I have numerous pictures if anybody would like to look at them. I've got the documentation from the ADA Compliance Board. I have talked with the engineers of Fort that are down there now. One of the problems they're talking about is moving us out 10 feet and redoing it. That is feasibility impossible. I don't know if we have ever contacted the state, but three years ago, our town boat that was parked at these docks, the lower unit got knocked off with boats trying to get into the courtesy dock. By moving our docks out even farther, we're even gonna compound the problem more. I don't think the state is even gonna allow us on this design we're working on. It's not feasible. So when I talked with the engineer that was there, he took pictures and he made statements. He says, "I agree with you. We can't push this dock out farther." I said, "That's because you people never do site visits."
So, so Paul, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop you. We, we know this is an issue. Capital Projects Meeting Committee is meeting in two weeks to discuss this, so.
Capital Project Committee was not intact when this job was designed.
Well, they are now and they're gonna be talking about it in two weeks.
They shouldn't be, because the taxpayers voted on specific things to be done. Let me show you one picture.
Paul, it's not under our purview right now to talk about this. We're not gonna discuss it with you.
Then maybe the newspapers might like it.
Well, maybe they will, but it, we don't discuss items given in public.
If you wanna look what we pay for.
We're not, Paul?
Here is the design. The design didn't even get built to the plan. It was a complete oversight. There was never one check measurement made of any of the items that were used there. It's a debacle. I invite every one of you to meet me tomorrow at noon time at there and come down and look at what we paid for, what's sitting there. You wouldn't allow it in your backyard.
May I say something?
Briefly, but it is.
We shouldn't actually.
We shouldn't be discussing it really with them. It is an issue for the Capitol.
No, this is just pushing it down the road another year.
Two weeks, Capital Projects Committee.
But it's not gonna be done for 2025. What my town administrator promised would be done.
Okay, it's not gonna be done, Paul, sorry.
Then it should be ruled unsafe. And at this point in time, to keep going up in our fees for those slips is an atrocity, because we don't have access, because you can't walk up and down. So I'll be there between 11:30 and 12 o'clock. Would any of you selectmen like to come down and look at what we paid for? Paid full price for. And is this?
I've used Slip 45 on the south side, so I know what you're talking about. And I, I've never had a problem with it.
You don't have a problem with that ramp?
I don't.
Meet me tomorrow, let me see you walk up and down it.
With a new knee, too.
Huh?
With a new knee.
All right, this is really not.
All right, thank you, Paul. All right, anyone else? Any item not on the agenda? All right, we'll move on. Jerry's gonna open our public hearing.
Public hearing, yes. Pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 130, Section 57 and 60, the Eastham Select Board will hold a public hearing on August 26th at 5:30 PM in the Eastham Town Hall, Earl Mountain Room, 2500 State Highway, Eastham, Massachusetts, 02642, concerning aquaculture licenses, aquaculture extensions, aquaculture transfers, and relinquished sites.
All right, thank you, Jerry. So the first thing we're going to do is that everyone has a sheet in their packet that shows all the sites. On the very end of the, I believe it's the second page, the second up from the bottom, we need, our first order business is to rescind the vote of.
We need to do all votes.
Oh, we're, oh, sorry. We're gonna rescind all votes taken with regard to aquaculture sites on July 8th, 2024, and July 22nd, 2024.
So moved.
All right, thank you. And do you wanna give a little brief? Yeah.
Yeah. Unfortunately, we had an instance where we did not duly note public hearings or notify any of the aquaculturists that we were discussing their grants on the 8th and the 22nd. So therefore, since it wasn't a legal meeting, none of the votes are legal. Our attorney has advised us that the best way to do it is to rescind all of them and then revote all of them, obviously at a duly advertised public hearing, which we have done. So tonight, the board is gonna go through everything that was discussed on either the 8th or the 22nd. We've also made some other corrections, because we found that some of, some of the grant information was wrong. So it's all hopefully right and correct, and we're gonna have to redo all of them.
So first, I believe Jerry's gonna go through the list of renewals. And I think just read.
Do we need to hold on?
We, oh, sorry.
Oh, we'll get a vote.
To the vote on the rescinding the previous votes. We have a motion and a second. Sorry, that was the discussion.
I know, sorry.
Does anyone have any questions? Okay, all right, we'll vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five to zero. All right, now Jerry will go through the renewals and lists. I think if you just list the name and the site number and how big it is.
All right.
You should be able to get through them fairly quick.
These are the following aquaculture license renewals. Benjamin, now if I mispronounce the name, please forgive me. Benjamin Gugren, Site N39 is half an acre. Chris Vaprino, Site N38 at .39 acres. Craig.
Zikian.
Who's Zikian?
You can do it. Who's?
Zikian?
Who's Zikian?
Forgive me. Site B11, one acre. Gary Doolittle, Site B6, one acre, and Site N35, .36 acres. Michael and William Sprig, Site N72, 1.79 acres, and Roger Galinas, Site N73, two acre parcel.
Second, right?
Sure, that was a motion, yeah, his was a motion. His second, all right, any discussion? Any discussion from anyone in the?
We can't hear you.
Can you wanna come up, Craig?
Sure.
Come on up.
Yeah, show up here without getting to the microphone.
That's right.
I'm gonna pull my licenses now, just.
Hi guys, Craig Kusig in B11, thank you very much. I just wanna note that, I think that, I'm pretty sure that you guys voted my site in, with an incorrect information in April. Okay, cuz you said it was, oh, you were just renewing stuff from July.
Oh, okay.
But it went in your minutes in April. Your packet from April misstated as half acre instead of one acre. So you might wanna check your.
Correction then.
So just check your minutes on that, that's, thank you.
Yes, I did.
Right, but in April, apparently, we only did a half an acre for him.
Okay.
So.
It's gonna be okay.
Yeah.
So today, now you're gonna get the money.
I just wanted to clarify, just.
Thank you. Got it. Thank you, Greg. All right, any, any discussion from the public or? All right, we'll vote on this one. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five to zero.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right, now we'll move to, move the following aquaculture license and renewal, license renewal and expansions. David Dwyer. Current site is B8E, a half acre parcel, and a request to expand to B8W, a half acre parcel. And Stephen.
I think we should do them separately.
Separately, okay. Maybe we'll make that motion for David Dwyer.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Are, are these, these parcels are adjacent, correct?
Mm-hmm, yes. They have the same number, EW, and East and West there.
Great.
They're adjacent. All right, we'll vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five to zero.
All right. Another aquaculture license renewal and expansion for Stephen McClellan. Request to renew Site B25E, a half acre parcel, and request to expand to Site B1, a one acre parcel.
I have a question.
Let's move it and then we can discuss.
I made the moves.
So, so a second.
Okay.
Okay. All right, questions?
Is, um, when I read through the packet, it indicated that the max is one acre, right?
The maximum is two acres.
Is two acres. No, I'm sorry. And you give the half of it and then you do the other half?
Mm-hmm. So he has a half, and he's expanding actually to a new site that was relinquished, I believe. So because he's already out there, we offered him.
Expansion.
Expansion.
Okay. Jamie?
Yeah, that was my, I guess, kind of my question was, in the case where someone starts with their half acre, when is it determined that it move, that it expand? Is it something that just automatically happens? Is it on timeline?
Two years.
Is it something where they request it?
Yeah, we hold it indefinitely, but they have to actually grow for two years and then request the expansion. So natural resources would go out, make sure there's things growing. It looks like they need an expansion and then it comes before you.
Okay. All right, anyone from the public? All right, we'll vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five to zero.
All right. The next motion is for an aquaculture license renewal, updated name, address, and an expansion. Je, the, the updated name, Jennifer Dwyer. The current site is B12W, a half acre parcel, and a request to expand to B12E, a half acres parcel.
So this is a, a motion to go from a half acre to one acre.
Correct.
It's just written a little differently, yeah.
And because there's a whole new thing, because she is marrying David Dwyer, they can only have two acres in common.
Total.
Total. So I think.
They'll both be maxed out after this.
Yeah, and you'll see, I think he's relinquishing Knoset Marsh later in the. Licenses, both of them, so we've adjusted it.
Did we get a motion a second on that one?
I move that we, we accept the, the expansion for Jennifer and for Jennifer Dwyer.
Mm-hmm, okay. I'll second. All right, any more discussion? Anything from the public? All right, we'll vote. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five to zero.
Good.
Another, another aquaculture license renewal and expansion for Michael O'Brien. Request to renew Site B17E, a half acre parcel, and a request to expand to Site B18E, a half acre parcel.
Uh, second.
All right, any discussion? Any discussion from the public?
And before you vote, I know this seems odd, but they are directly adjacent.
Yeah, I'm looking at the map right now.
I have to keep looking at the map, yeah.
All right, any more discussion? All right, vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five to zero.
Okay. A renewal with modification. First is for Darlene Moore.
Wait, what about I? Oh, sorry, I missed one.
Okay. Request to renew Site B21W, which is a five, a half acre parcel in Boat Meadow, and a request to add the li, add to the license Samuel Carpenteriari.
So moved.
A second.
Yeah. All right, any discussion? Suzanne? No?
No.
Okay. Anyone from the public? All right, hearing nothing, we'll vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five to zero.
Another renewal with modification for Isaiah Hilford-Purdy. Request to renew Site N61, a one acre parcel in Knoset Marsh, and request to add to the license Leighton Reyes.
Reese.
Re, Reese?
It's Reese.
Is it Reese? Okay.
It's Reese.
Forgive me again. With a last name like mine, it happens all the time.
Kirk and Jerry, boy, that's impressive, yeah. All right.
A second.
Okay, any discussion in the board? Any discussion from the public? Seeing none, we'll vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five to zero.
Can I ask a question?
Certainly.
Just so I, the, so they start with a half acre parcel and then withhold the other half acre so they can expand into it.
Right.
And then, where does the second acre come from?
The second acre can come if someone relinquishes a grant and we, you know, offer it up. And honestly, I need to check that out. I don't know how natural resources decides how to give that away once it's available.
I think in the, in the past, they always went, went.
Thank you, Craig, it's helpful.
So we can, so we can hear you.
Sorry. I, I think in the past, in the recent past, anyway, last few years, I think natural resources has looked at any site that comes up as available and gone to the growers, the existing growers first before they go to the waiting list.
Got you.
I, I was asked numerous times, you want a second acre? I said, "No, I'm sorry I said that, cuz now I want a second acre." So, you know, I'm like, whatever, just saying. So I think they always looked at the current growers first to take, to see if they could take advantage of the open bottom space.
Yeah. Great. All right, any other discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five to zero.
And just out of an abundance of caution, we're revoting the Collins Grants.
Yes, I will do that. An aquaculture license transfer from Jared Collins to Alana Collins and Cameron Collins. It's a Sites N1, N2, and N7, 1.5 acres.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Anyone from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five to zero.
Okay, relinquishing an aquaculture license.
I think you can do all the, oh, wait a minute. You can relinquish everybody together if you want to.
Okay. Alexander Sostaro and Gerald Sostaro relinquishing Sites B1, B1, a one acre parcel. Christopher Vaprino relinquishing Site B2, a one acre parcel, and David Dwyer relinquishing Site N63, a half acre parcel.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Anyone from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five to zero.
And then if you agree with my memo not to assign B2 and to wait, and Sam is here if we wanna talk about that reason why, but we'll skip, why don't we skip to Jeremy Lapardo first? We'll do that one and then we can talk about why B2 should still be available.
Okay. You got that? It's in the bottom right here.
Okay.
It's your last one, you're doing great, Jerry.
Yeah, thank you, Jerry.
Aquaculture license transfer to waitlist applicants. Jeremy Laparro.
Lapardo.
Laparro. All right. Sites N63, a half acre parcel in Knoset Marsh Estuary.
I'll second that. Oh, you second, all right. Any discussion? Anyone here? No one online? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five to zero. So is that it for the public hearing?
That is.
And then we can go on and discuss B2?
Yes.
All right, so we'll close the public hearing.
We need to rescind the prior vote, though?
We did that. That was the first thing we did. We rescinded all the votes from seven, eight, and seven twenty-two.
And we're not redoing that, unless you, you know.
That's right, okay.
Let's be decisive otherwise.
I was getting confused.
Okay. All right.
All right, so basically, we have an issue over in Boat Meadow where all of a sudden, or in the past couple of years, Widgeon Grass is intruding or growing in some of the grant areas that were formerly identified as grant areas, right? We recognized it last, I think it was last year or the year before, when some, another aquaculturist was gonna expand into one of those grants and the state came down and they found the Widgeon Grass. So that expansion was blocked. This year, it affects Darlene Moore and Sam Carpenteriari's second half. So their first half is currently now planted. The second half of their grant that is reserved for them has Widgeon Grass and DMF will not allow us to give that parcel. So in looking at this situation, we, we actually, we don't have any other place for Sam and Darlene to move once they need to expand, which is not today, but it will be at some point and we need to find a half an acre for that expansion. So what I'm asking you to do is rather than give it to someone on the waitlist right now, is to hold B2 in reserve. If we can find another place that's more adjacent for Sam and Darlene to move to next year, great, we can then assign B2 to someone else. But for right now, we really only have a half acre available. We can then assign B two to someone else, but for right now, we really only have a half acre available.
Okay, so what are they on right now?
They're on.
Twenty-one West. East has grass.
Twenty-one West, twenty-one East has grass, but B two is open, has no grass.
Right.
Okay, so your suggestion is to hold it.
Just hold.
Not give it to anybody right now.
I mean, we could have asked Sam if he wants to move to B two, but in that instance. DMF would come and take away. The current grant because it has some grass in it now. They're letting him keep it and work it because it's planted, but if it wasn't, they would have taken that. So we don't want to lose that half acre.
Right, if if he goes, then we lose the half acre.
And you've you've had it one year or is this your first?
Uh, this is the first year with product planted on it.
Okay, so after next year, then he could.
Sorry.
Someone's gonna watch.
It was approved two years ago. And, um, it was kind of post COVID, so it was slow getting a lot of the approvals. And then, uh, when I got the state approval to purchase seed, it was in the fall of last year, which I didn't think it made sense to put product out in November. Just to take it off before the icing potential in January, February. So the seed order came in in June. So, um, it's almost full now. And I was just worried that if, you know, B two is given away, it could be years for me to expand into the additional half. Um, when I could be ready as soon as next spring to utilize that other half acre, so.
Gotcha.
That was my my major concern. And then another thing, I was talking with Stephanie, I didn't know if you guys knew about this, but they said that because B twenty-one East. Was not utilized for two years, that that was the timeframe that sparked a DMF resurvey. So it seemed to like the town's two-year window. Um, like right now, since I'm growing on twenty-one West and there is witchen grass, that they'll, they won't take that away if I'm growing on it. Once I remove it or transfer, that sparks a new survey from D M F. So it could be some weird overlapping with the town's two-year window and then what what like a resurvey is. So even though there's witchen grass, it'll never get shut down as long as someone's growing on it. There's no resur survey while someone's actively. So it's kind of this weird thing that, you know, it could technically take it away if they wanted to, but since somebody's on it, they will.
And obviously, we don't want to leave B two open forever, but I think. For now, makes sense.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, everybody okay with that?
Yes.
All right. We don't need to vote that.
No.
All right. All right, I think we'll move on. I already did.
We got through it.
Next we have, and there's no one online with any hands up or anything. Okay. Select board goals.
So basically, I didn't really want to, um, since I didn't get it out in the packet, I don't. Want to talk about it tonight, but I did want to give you an update on your current goals, where we kind of are. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, um, let you consider it and then we'll talk about goals in September. Talk about re-upping these, re-organizing these, and you can see on the housing portion, once you look at that. Um, we're going to have a housing workshop, kind of like we did with the master plan, but just on housing. Hopefully, it'll be the first meeting in October, so we're going to do some of those updates then for you.
All right, awesome. Anyone have any glaring questions on what she handed out earlier? All right, so.
A catch-up question?
Yep.
Um, so these goals already exist.
Yes.
Okay. And so what you've done in red is progress?
Yes.
Thanks.
All right, we'll move on. Um, update, oh, we're not going to talk about the dispatch.
No, I'm sorry, Rich had to drive his son to the airplane to fly to Rome. So this is his topic and we're just going to push it off to the next meeting. There's no urgency. We just have an update on some new. New opportunities.
Kind of exciting too.
I mean, that is exciting.
Yes.
Um, next communication plan. Boy, Kayla, I have to say, that was quite comprehensive.
Do you like it?
I do.
So I was gonna.
Hit people from all different directions. That's the way to go.
Yeah, and I think that's kind of what we're missing. Um, as I, you can see in the plan, I pulled the, um. Demographics of what we're hitting through our social media and we're really lacking like the younger population and our older population, which are both. Important when it comes to, you know, these ongoing projects that we have. Um, I was gonna put this in a presentation for you, but then I'm thinking that you already read it, so, um, no need to go over exactly everything again. Um, I just kind of wanted to hit the goals and, um. See what everyone thought about them and if you think that we need to go a different direction. Jackie and I kind of decided together that we really want to up our newsflash newsletters again. And get out like three a month, um, alternate them between Jackie's updates, department update and then, um. Feature a committee, because there are some committees that are looking for a little extra push.
That's great.
Um, and sometimes it's hard to accommodate them when they're. Just like, hey, I have this event like, but it would be easier if we could give them a month and they can give me everything at once. Um, so then we can get it out to everyone. Um, so we definitely want to push those. We want to get everyone over to Civic Plus, the notify me system. It's kind of like the constant contact, but it's the signup. On, um, the website, so it goes out through email, text, kind of like Code Red, but it's not as like official. Well, it is official, but like.
Urgency.
And what it does is if you ask to be updated on planning board activities, it will notify you when there's a new planning board meeting posted. Or so it it does it that way. It leads you back to the website. Um, it is a little confusing and we're going to try and streamline that. Too, because. Yeah.
So kind of with that, we're also going to look at improving our website a little bit. Um, I know the navigation can be kind of tricky and then also there's kind of outdated redundant information. So it's like one page. Another has another.
Um, it's great.
So what I've been focusing on is the projects page, which is on our website, the homepage, and it's going to have all of our. Master planning part, and then it's also going to have our capital projects. I can pull it up.
And yeah, show it to them. It's just a a one-stop shop where anyone who has a question about any ongoing project that's large can go there and get the info.
That's excellent.
Pull it up in one second. I just want to, so I did separate the master plan. As part of kind of a separate. Communication plan, just because I do think it it needs more.
Needs its own.
Um, yeah.
So outline.
We're going to get rid of all those weird one-off websites, like Tea Time. Had its own, Master Planning had its own, um, Affordable Housing Trust has its own. We're going to get rid of all of those and pull them back onto our website, so we're just driving people to one spot opposed to a bunch of different ones.
And if they haven't, an existing robust website, it'll probably be a link, but. Since a lot of people say, oh, I go to Tea Time, there's nothing updated on it, because no, there isn't. We don't, we didn't.
We don't maintain that.
Right.
Yeah, Lauren Barker did a really good job at those and that was, I think, during our website redesign, so we didn't have the functionality that we do now. Uh, so it just really makes sense to put it on here. Just have to join the zoo, I guess. Does anyone have any feedback on it? I mean, ideas that you want to see? We are thinking about maybe doing like a podcast. Rich is into it. He wants to do it.
And people would be asleep within three seconds.
You know, years ago.
Liz has a podcast.
I know.
I haven't asked Mia how it's going.
Years ago, Silvio and I talked about doing like a radio show.
Yes.
From the library. Where we could, you know, just put the audio over channel eighteen, not video. And so people could listen in and, you know, we could take questions and I think something like that would be kind of fun.
It would be.
We could break it up, you know, between.
It's just a lot of work, but but a a format like that would be easier to manage because people would be calling in. You wouldn't have to come up with tons of content each time.
We'd have maybe some, you know, highlights at the beginning. Um, you know, new things happening, um, how to get ahold of the town, you know, general things, but then jump into people calling with questions. And have someone screen them, you know, and and throw them at us, which I. I was kind of excited to be doing it and then Sylvia left, so kind of.
It could be topically, though, so it could be a select board member. Um, Rich or I and a department head and we could focus on like, you know, if it's Paul, community development projects. Or if it's DPW, anything DPW related.
Or even committee.
Natural resources.
Yeah. Portable housing or CPA when it's time to get applications, you know, something people could call in.
To see, try and do.
And actually, we had talked about the library, but they don't have live. A feed to the channel.
No.
But here it is.
Yes.
Yeah.
So we could do it, but not with the video, just audio, I think would be good.
Yeah, and I mean, if we did a video concept to it, we can definitely repurpose it for channel eight, which I we we need to utilize more because it's there. You know, our older demographic is.
Do watch that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so I think my goal is to introduce one newer technology. And then one older kind of try to either channel eight or, uh, like something print to get out to everyone.
But even say we did it on channel eight and up on the screen, it had, you know, phone numbers, contact information, that kind of thing the whole time. Yeah, just an hour show.
Interesting.
If it's just once a month.
Yeah.
So just throwing that out there.
What's, one of the, one thing, Kayla, are you going to try when you give it set up? To get a group to try and see how it works before we roll it out? Talking from my dark ages day, when I worked a long time ago. At the United States Postal Service, they would create some kind of. Computer programs and they gave them to me to try it. And I was a hundred percent successful in crashing them, so they never gave it again, but 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 it helped. It helped create, uh, because I could do, I could crash a lot of things. Um, so it might be worth, before you push it out to everyone, to have. Some select, some group, people who have are clueless on how stuff works, some who know it. To to try even for a week or two to see if they can get it to work and if they don't, where is it? Where's the problem?
Yeah, so in this plan, one of the goals is to have, you know, all of our employees trained a hundred percent on the website, kind of just for consistency. And that everyone knows how to update the site, so departments can use their own individual pages. Um, but this main page only I and Angela and I have access to. So I think it's important for people to get a little bit more training, how to use things, and then we're also thinking about doing it like on community side as well, like. How do we sign up for these things? Where do I find it? How do I use it? Um, and I was.
We're gonna need to do a lot of that.
Yeah, with the library or Dorothy on that. Um, so briefly, this is our website, as everyone knows, um. The notify me, this was what Jackie and I are talking about switching over to. When you click into it, there is a lot.
This is the problem.
So you can sign up for all of these agendas, only ones that you're interested in. Um, and then if you go down, you know, we have the RFP bid postings, uh, our calendar. H R and then our news flashes. So the most important one is the all-town news. That's what I send out. Um, so I'm going to push people to go there, but obviously if they have their specific interest, um, I know Shelffish uses it for like closures.
And that's a good one. If you, if even if you're a salt pond person or whatever and you want to know when things are closed, that's a good one to sign up for.
Yeah. And then our project page is a work in progress, progress, because I want to see what everyone said tonight in hopes that you would support everyone going here. Um, but it has everything. Just like brief.
All our capital.
Yeah, like this is wastewater, so the most current plans, um, those news flashes I did for town meeting two years ago on like why we need it. Um, so it'll bring you to. Like, stuff like this, so people can kind of go back in time a little bit if they want to.
Okay.
Um, what I'm working right now is making the master plan section. More up to date and off of Jackie's presentation last month, it's going to have the timelines, the presentation. Um, and I also want to make sure to put the date of these things we're updated. Just so people are like, wait, when was last time? Like, is this two years ago? Is this this month or?
Yeah.
Yeah, if everyone is in agreement that we can use this page, then I'll continue working on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
Bob?
Do we have any website designers that are kicking the tires on this thing? Like, you know, more than three clicks and nobody's going to get there. You know, tha- that kind of a experience doing this stuff, because these things can be really helpful. But it all depends on somebody's tenacity to search for something.
Right, and that's kind of why I'm doing it this way, like to get to this page, it's one click.
One click.
So you go to the homepage, click on projects and it's it's all right there.
We did test that out on someone who was actually yelling at me because they couldn't find any updates on anything and so. Um, Kayla gave him a little primer and then he went home and his wife is like, it's right here. You just go to the front page and then you click on that one button and he came back and apologized.
That's called refrigerator blindness.
And he said it really was easy and there is a lot of material there.
Yeah, and if they want to get more in depth, then obviously I direct them in those sites. Um, but basically the general overview of the projects will be one click, all right there.
I think I'm just kind of piggybacking on Jerry's idea to beta test this thing or pilot it, whatever you think is. Just get some other people involved that are really ignorant of how this navigation works.
Library and snag people coming in and say, hey.
Yeah, and I think it's more of just like every time we put out an update, like on Facebook or a flyer or something, we're saying, visit this page. Because right now, people don't really know it's there unless they're exploring our site and just so happen to see it.
Um, I went to look for your town managers' reports and. They're a little buried and you have to know where they are. Um, I will say Civic Plus gives you a template and then is like. You guys get basically good luck and then it has. Staff can update it and that was a feature that people were sold on, but then.
Yeah.
It's not people's jobs or they don't quite understand. A hierarchy of laying out a website so that it doesn't do that, so I'm pleased that you're. Somebody needs to.
That's, I mean, it's, don't get the wrong impression from me. It's, I'm glad you're simplifying it, consolidating it. I'm just thinking we ought to do a little bit of testing on it, something, you you may be so close where you don't see something.
Yeah, totally, and I that was on the list as well of the goals is to kind of redo Jackie's section under admin. Um, and kind of pull town manager select board together because a lot of the things coincide, so it makes more sense. To have the select board packets available under. Her stuff, so I'm gonna.
And traditionally, administration, which nobody, nobody knows what it is, but administration was always the select board. And the town administrator or the town manager, so. You know, separating us makes sense sometimes, but, you know.
And then also, you know, for the newsletter, if you you already have your town manager report.
Yeah.
So you can always just, do you have the version of Civic Plus that lets you do a newsletter? Like built in or do you have to use a third party?
Um, so we have the news flash capability, so I'd imagine it's the same. I think.
It's just not as convenient as Constant Contact, which is so easy to sign up for and get things.
Oh, yeah, that list is a nightmare. Um, I just, we went through this with Brewster and. We don't have the version that like will do a newsletter, but like Chatham does. So like these Suzanne. Or like the notice, there's like a notify system too that isn't just like the email. I don't know, there's more than one version. And I was like, we don't have the one that does this thing.
Yeah, we have the one that will notify email, text, whatever you sign up for, and then these down here, the news flashes. These I think you can make into newsletters. Um, it's just how you design them. So obviously, it's a little bit more in-depth than Constant Contact because you don't have the templates or anything, but.
The only thing I I would want to see if we could figure out, and it's probably would have been done by now if somebody had figured it out, is that we've got. A number of things here that are a pull, a number of things that are a push and, you know, the pull, you're depending on the. Person to want to go get something and the push more like a channel eight or flyers. You know, stuck under their nose is more, and and in fact, that radio show thing was a great idea. So that that's a push and I think we're going to need more of those.
Yeah, and that's kind of why I broke out the master plan from the whole day-to-day communications, just because I think it is so different. Um, and those projects really do need. Um, and those projects really do need like every single angle that you can hit people at, so we will see how it goes.
All right.
Nice.
Yeah, I'm into it. It looks good.
Cool.
Thank you, Kayla. A nice plan, and I'm excited to see what you come up with.
See what great stuff you come up.
Yeah, and Adam also wants to come in and talk to you about emergency communications and the plan for that too.
Yeah, I was gonna incorporate it in this, just because emergency communications is a big part of, obviously, communication planning. Um, but he needs to have the, what is it Jackie, the community in emergency preparedness thing.
Sure.
Signed by you guys, so we figured we would pull out the communication plan for that, do a presentation both of us together with that, so it kind of goes all together.
We like to group things for you.
Yeah.
Totally. All right, we'll move on to committee appointments, uh, Catherine Paradise to the, for the finance committee.
Yes, I move, uh, Catherine Finance to appoint her to the finance committee. She has, um, she's excited about it, she is, uh, um, we had a wonderful interview with her. She's done some financial stuff, she's, uh, attended, um, finance committee meeting, and as she said, she was she would, the chair was gonna allow her to speak, but she basically was listening. So she's, she's there to learn and go forward, and and this appointment will bring the finance committee up to its full nine members.
All right. Is that your motion?
A second.
Yes. All right, any more discussion?
I always find it, I'm gonna say this about Carolyn too, but I know I work with Kate a lot, yeah, from the search committee.
Ah.
And so I've gathered like a little bit of her background through doing all of the interviews. Um, so it is always interesting to be like, oh, this is the full extent of your background, so I was pleased to see that she wanted to serve on the finance committee.
Yeah, she said she wanted to serve, she's been wanting to serve there a long time, so that was her chance.
All right. Any more discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Hi, any opposed? Five to zero. All right, next is Elaine Lipton, um, COA Board of Directors, I was in on that interview last week. And Elaine is highly qualified, we're so happy she's interested, she's her wealth of experience in town committees, human services. Um, we actually had two very qualified, uh, candidates, the other woman spent in town about a year and a half, I believe. And they, they probably have another opening very shortly on the COA, someone, uh, will be leaving, so expect another person very soon, um, but I'll wholeheartedly, uh, recommend, uh, Elaine Lipton for appointment.
Second.
All right, any other discussion? Right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five to zero.
Uh, I move we approve Carolyn McPherson to the Strategic Planning Committee.
I'll second.
And I said it about Kate, but I'm gonna say about Carolyn, we all know Carolyn, uh, and I think I've more known of her and through people, so it was such a treat to actually get to talk to her and interview her.
Housing knowledge is just phenomenal.
And it's, you know, even when you do know somebody, but then you're like, you ask them pointed questions, you're like, oh, this is really interesting, so she has lots of experience and strong background in strategic planning, and we've had a really lovely conversation.
All right.
Um, I will say the Strategic Planning Committee has some asks of us at some point, though.
Ah, all right.
Can maybe put that at the end.
Okay.
I, I wanna make a quick comment, I worked with her on the zoning task force. Outstanding, always prepared, um, just really great team member.
Yeah. I worked with her on the Community Preservation Act.
Yep.
She knows her stuff.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five to zero. All right, town managers' report.
Okay, can you pull that?
Sorry, sorry. Uh-oh, it's on the website here.
Um, I did wanna, before we get into any, um, info, I did want to discuss with you. I had a back and forth with the Province Town Independent regarding the article that was written about the master plan report, which um, I think there was a misunderstanding about what that presentation was. Um, I think they thought it was a housing update, which it wasn't, which is coming soon, but, um, so I did, I did have a couple of back and forths with the editor, Ed Miller, and finally, he did consent to uh, putting my rebuttal or my opinion in the newspaper, which, you know, I thought was very gracious of him. Um, but I do want to take umbrage at the, because I, I now have people on Facebook saying why are we waiting till twenty thirty-five? On the timeline, very clearly, in all of our timelines, the simple one and the really long one. Um, we have housing finishing in twenty thirty-five, finishing. So what the timeline actually says, if it's read, is that we'll be doing RFPs in twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. Once we get the feasibility study results, we're kind of regroup, find out what we can and can't do. Um, with hopefully, housing development starting in twenty twenty-eight. So I think, you know, given, depending on what, what happens with wastewater, that can be accelerated or not. Um, but I just wanted that to be clear for people, I know that it's been, um, I, a huge criticism of us, and I think in, in this sense, I understand why people are nervous about the time it's taking, but I, but I don't think it's fair the criticism that it's gonna take ano- another ten years, so I don't believe that's true.
And that we're not waiting.
We're not waiting.
Waiting till twenty thirty-five. It's just also kind of how long these things take, which is really unfortunate. But if you look at lots of the other housing developments that have gone in a, in the area, they've they take, that's how long they take, and then there's just.
Well, you also have wastewater.
The thing that was cut out of what I sent, um, Ed was basically that I think people continue to forget that we just did sixty-five units of affordable housing in twenty twenty. And it's twenty twenty-four.
Oh.
And so
We forgot.
Obviously, you know, Turo and Wellfleet and Orleans are all producing a lot right now, which is awesome. And we want the region to produce housing, and we want Eastham to produce housing, but they're catching up to what we've already done. So I think, you know, Wellfleet's forty units and Turo's, I forget, I think it's somewhere in that range, thirty-five to forty units, and and Orleans's units are gonna help them catch up to us. By then, hopefully, we'll have another something in the works.
Yeah.
Like we are now.
So give us a break, man, that's what I want.
All right, can I just make a comment? Um, I, you and I chatted about this briefly, and I, I thought your rebuttal was perfectly exactly what you needed to do. Um, I think one of the things that we're fighting here is this dependency on wa- wastewater. I mean, the, whether or not it's true or not is, is, I mean, I think there is a huge dependency on having wastewater, but it's by the same token. We've had developers come into places like Tea Time before we were even thinking about wastewater, and go back and forth with the zoning board on how and what, what are we gonna build there?
Mm hmm.
So you and I were chatting about this, and I would love to see us either do something with Tea Time, do something incrementally, rather than just hang our hats on this dependency for wastewater.
Mm hmm.
Um.
We're only dependent until May of twenty twenty-five, which is really nine months away.
Why is that, Jackie?
Is that, that'll be our next vote for.
If the, if the town votes for wastewater, we can go one way, and if the town doesn't, then we go the other way, which is to how much, how many units can we fit on there without wastewater?
Okay, see, that's, that's what I think, that's what I think is gonna happen.
Yeah.
I think it's gonna take multiple attempts to get wastewater through, that's just my gut, I mean, I don't have any data. But, um, you know, just looking at the past with water project itself was a it's hard fought, uh, buying Tea Time was, was hard fought. Um, you know, these things just, people aren't just gonna snap their fingers and agree to another big tax increase in order to do this. So I'm, 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 use the term, we need to pull a rabbit out of our hat, we need to do something incrementally, I think, and so I think we need to start planning for that. And I understand if you think that it's too soon.
I don't think it's too soon, I think that we are literally three weeks away from having the zoning task force, and you know, our consultants, Stan Tech, give you guys a report on what we can and can't do there. And so right now, we have zoning in that area that lets us do, you know, fourteen single-family homes. Or, you know, so we're in the midst of trying to really a- adjust our zoning so that we can do the most we wanna do with that parcel. So it, we just have a, a, a little bit longer to wait before we'll have the information that I think you'll need to make a decent decision about if you wanna try and do an RFP earlier, we can do that. Um, and see what happened, you know, see who, who bites, um.
If anyone, right, I get it, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um.
That's good input.
But I just wanted to, um, do that, the dangerous dog hearing update, uh, we're still going back and forth. The Mr. Moore is saying that he, he and the dogs are no, no longer in Eastham, we are looking for proof of that. Or we're going to start finding him. Um, roadwork in the National Park roads, that's, that's something that's gonna start happening, so hopefully, we'll get you some updates, we may even, um, be asked to use our code RED system for that. Um, wastewater project is moving along slowly but surely. I gave you the information about the Rock Harbor improvements that we're looking at, and oh, there's some meeting, oh, we have a goodbye coffee for Chief Keen on the sixth Friday morning. Um, what time is that? Is that like ten or nine thirty?
I believe Dan starts at nine.
Oh, nine, nine to eleven.
Lisa starts at ten.
And then on Monday, we'll be swearing in the new chief in a ceremony.
The ninth.
The ninth.
Ten o'clock.
Yes, at ten o'clock.
The night, the ten, oh, boy, we're gonna get.
Yeah.
Um.
That'll be up in the
In the fire nation.
Firehouse.
We usually do it, the clerk goes over to the firehouse.
They open up all the doors, they take all the trucks out.
It's great, those events are great. Um, Paul wanted me to remind you that we're doing a public information session on the strategic plan update Wednesday, the fourth from four to six, um, and Cape Cod Commission's one Cape, it's kind of too late to register. But we have two tickets that we reserved.
Yeah.
So if you want to go, like, one day, we could probably, Rich and I could split off and.
Have to look at their agendas.
Yeah, it's, it's hard, because they don't do the agenda until kind of the last minute, so, but.
We'll have a meeting before then.
Yeah.
It does look like you can still register.
Oh, good.
So a lot of people wanna go.
All right.
Oh, can I add? Can I add one thing?
Yes.
So we got, um, an email from the MMA about the annual conference, it's gonna be in the Seaport this year. Um, it's the week after Martin Luther King Day, I believe, it's not the long one, it's the week after. Um, so if you'd like to go, we probably should get on top of hotel rooms, just because it's a lot smaller than the Prudential area.
And Bob, we have to orient Bob.
Um.
Uh-oh.
Yeah.
So it's a, um.
A junket.
Friday, Saturday, the conference is Friday and Saturday, we usually, some of us go up Thursday night, because it starts pretty early. Um, the governor's there, literally every municipality is there, they have some interesting workshops. Um, it's also a lot of fun, a lot of networking, so, and E- Eastham usually shows up robustly.
Gotcha.
I'm interested, I'd have to look at work and whatnot.
Yeah.
Um.
What's the date?
The weekend after the eighteen.
Twenty-four. It's somewhere around the twentieth every year, but I don't know what that Friday.
Oh, January.
January, in the middle of January, it's the weirdest thing.
Say, it's.
It used to be snowstorms every time.
The twenty-third to the twenty-fifth.
Twenty-third.
There we go.
Oh, okay.
I will say the irony of the mission of the MMA being held in the Seaport District is just so good, but so terrible.
Yeah, they're gonna be, um, renovating the Heinz Convention Center, so.
Oh, that's why.
Yeah, so. So for at least, they have a five-year contract now.
With the Seaport.
With the Seaport, so for the next five years, it'll be at Seaport. But it's a similar situation where the hotels are connected and all that. You don't have to go outside for three days if you don't want to.
In January.
Convention Center?
What?
See, at the Seaport.
Yeah.
Convention Center?
Yep, there's hotel, I think two hotels are connected. I know at least one is, there might be two, though.
They just.
Marriott.
The Omni is the one that they have the room blocks at.
Uh.
I don't know what else is around that.
It's probably discounted.
Yeah, we have to leave the and walk outside, it's okay, we could do it. We have.
Sure.
All right.
All right, thank you, um, so I'm interested, Kayla, definitely.
I'm also interested and could get back to you.
Yeah.
One Cape last year was frustrating for me, so I don't.
I had no interest.
Um, it's.
It used to be in the middle of summer.
It's so tough, because I was like, cool. I, I think we all understand the issue at hand, I'm looking for strategies, not just another deep dive into what the issue is. I'm looking for strategies on what to do about it, and or would have liked to see like more time to talk with colleagues than a lecture on an issue I already know about.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was so mixed on that one.
All right, uh, new upcoming agenda items and need for follow-up, um, we didn't put this in the packet. Oh, and.
From Jackie, that we, we have to sign that, uh, discussion, sign, sign the re-
Oh.
Determination to allow
Yes.
Our attorney to represent.
So you have to sign that, I'm asking you to sign that, and you got a lot of shelfish licenses now to sign.
Okay.
But that's basically on the regional school agreement, we are getting a separate attorney from Copman and Page, Lauren Goldberg, who's fabulous.
She helped with the charter.
Yeah, she, she's an expert at charters, contracts, agreements, things like this, and so she's gonna be representing all four towns if they so choose, Wellfleet has said they want their own council, so they're not gonna join us, but it would be Brewster, Orleans, and Eastham saving some money to.
Doesn't Wellfleet use Copman and Page?
They do, which it's, it's odd, I don't understand it, we don't understand it, but it's okay, and they can join us later if they want to.
Okay, um, do we need to vote that or anything?
You don't need to vote it, you just need to sign.
And it's, you need to sign this, so it releases a law firm to be able to represent
Other, more than one.
Others, yeah, they, they, they represent us, but so then now they can represent.
So that's the determination, and these are the shelfish.
And Orleans.
All right. So then moving on, new upcoming agenda items, need a follow-up on previous items. So Rich had given me this the other day when we were setting the agenda, and it's a, it's not in the packet, though.
So it's, it's on OneDrive, so you can actually look at it now.
Okay.
Um, it has its own separate folder, um, and I've been updating it as with Agenda.
What's it called in the?
Uh, I wanna say.
It shows the new and upcoming, like what we've, key events, and then their status.
So for the budget, every year, we do this timeline that we share with the FinCom, and it's very helpful, it keeps us all lets us know when, when the deadlines are for everything, when we're gonna be discussing budget items. Rich said, why don't we do this for the select board, which is a great idea, it kind of just alerts you guys of what's coming up, like every year in December, we're gonna talk about the residential tax exemption, right, for a while. So that should be on the schedule, um, when do we vote to set the tax rate? That should be on the schedule, and I think it'll be especially helpful for new members who haven't gone through a few cycles and.
I have gone through a few cycles, and it's still like a little bit of a surprise every time, so I love this.
I think under select board.
Yeah, then it's called Agenda.
Future schedule.
Agenda and event schedule.
Okay.
I love this, thank you so much for all the new charts and organization. new charts and organization.
We're trying, we are trying. Yeah, we do have a lot to keep track of. It's, for a small town, I remember when I first came here from Dennis, I thought, oh, you know, Eastham's a small town. It'll be, and it's not. It, we do, we just move it just to
Wait a minute, there's more than one of these? Oh, I see those are shellfish. Right, so that's the first thing.
And then we have a couple of others, Community Preservation. Got a lot to sign.
All right, so next, we do not have the minutes. They were not the newer ones in the packet.
And I had a brief comment about strategic planning.
Yes, we have other business correspondents, so go ahead Suzanne.
In interviewing Carolyn and with Karen Strauss, there was some maybe desire to get um, committees and boards to come up with like little tiny strategic plans.
Oh, boy.
Yearly.
It's ambitious.
Um, and they were saying that they were, I asked if they would create documentation to, to help to help with that. And there was maybe some desire to have buy-in from the board as liaisons to help boards and committees with this.
Be nice if they come up with some sort of a outline or framework and then
I tried being like, when, when do you plan this to happen? Kind of like, when, when are you looking for like the first round of this to happen and calendar year or fiscal year? Karen said calendar year and twenty twenty-five. So this is me putting, um, letting everybody know that it is on the Strategic Planning Committee's radar. And they might come to us at some point with a request. Or that, I don't, I don't super know how it works of like, who tells boards and committees that they have to do something?
Well, right, and that's
So this is the issue. So all of our boards and committees have a statement of
Charge.
Mission, a charge. Um, and we have several boards and committees that are essential as regulatory boards and they they determine their own destiny and they have their own plan. So the plan is, we're gonna be dealing with everything that comes before us on a regulatory basis for the next year. And if they want to set side goals, like work on a regulation or something, they do that. But, um, I would hesitate to tell those regulatory boards that they need to do something extra, right?
Yeah, I was, I was a little on the
But we do have a lot of committees that are, that have less of a mission. That might, you know, I don't know, they might want to have some kind of more structured approach, but
Well, I did say that I was at one point on a c- committee in town and I was kind of like, why are we here? And the committee did not last that much longer after that. And so I could see its usefulness or even just a greater awareness for the strategic plan while it moves forward, but I think it could either be really overwhelming for people to consider, or it would take up too much of a committee's time to consider because people will just like get stuck in the weeds.
Well, that's why I think something, some sort of a framework where one part has the charge plugged in and then maybe, you know, updated goals regarding the stra- big strategic plan for the town. Right, and how it relates to that.
Things that they have to do in the big strategic plan. I, I, um, I think, you know, w- we, we need to do our strategic planning and updating the strategic plan more efficiently and more meaningfully before we make more mini ones.
Exactly. How they relate, like we ask people when they interview for a new committee, if they understand how this committee and it's not a blue one, but, um, oh, here you go, here's blue one. How the committee, you know, relates to the strategic plan, how the goals. So really, for each committee, we could actually just take their charge and plug in you know, how it relates to the strategic plan. I think that would probably be enough, instead of having their own strategic plan. The charge is really it. Otherwise, you get, you get somebody new every year that's a chair and man, this could really
You know, these, like the task forces that we've done, they're so honed. You know, they have an agreement of what they're supposed to be doing, what they want to do. And, you know, like in the zoning task force, I mean, they're so great because they keep coming back to us saying, well, we can do this, this and this, but we can't do And so I think that's very useful. Um, so I think there are some committees that need more focus or maybe we need more interaction with them.
Right, if they're a
I would just stay away from the regulatory boards because they have, they have goals within the strategic plan. If it's like Board of Health or whatever.
It was kind of a, it was a conversation that came up while doing the interview with Carolyn. And I was like, gosh, probably put this on the board's radar because it seems and I wasn't sure, it wasn't like a direct act, like Karen wasn't like, hey, will you ask the board? Like, oh, I should maybe let the board know that maybe in the next couple of months.
And when you're good with that, thank you. I appreciate those, I, updates, I do.
Yeah, well, I was kind of immediately to help other people with it. Yeah, I was like
We've, you know, redone a lot of the charges and that in itself is a monumental task. It really is. So something like that would be, I think, almost impossible. By the time you get it finished, you'd have new people and then you have to do it over again, so.
Yeah, which I guess is also why we don't do it super yearly, we have this.
I know, forever. Jamie?
Um, I just had one other thing to bring up. Um, I know we had talked about this kind of on the other side of the summer and not that I think we need to jump right on it, but I was thinking maybe something for a future agenda would be, um, to start talking about that Shellfish Advisory Committee and what that's gonna look like. Um, and just kind of getting that on our radar in the and I'm actually, um, meeting with John tomorrow to talk about, you know, the structure of the department and what, whether, you know, what we're gonna advertise for and all of that, so.
All right, any other business? Let's hear it.
I move we adjourn. Oh, he had some other business?
About a second? All right, all in favor?